Good evening and welcome to the December 16th Meeting of East Point City Council. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Shropshire.
President.
Councilmember Freely will not be in attendance. Councilmember Atkins.
President.
Councilmember Ziegler.
President.
Councilmember Cummings will not be in attendance. Councilmember Mitchell.
President.
Councilmember Butler. And Councilmember Martin Rogers. Okay, alright. Mayor Holling, we have a call.
Tonight, our invocation will be by Pastor Jamie Vernon of Tri-Cities Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, during this season of giving, we pray that we'll have generosity in our hearts, in the way that we proceed tonight, in the way that we think of our fellow man, in the way that we think of this great city. May you guide the hearts and the thoughts, the minds of each person that's present tonight, each speaker. And we pray, God, that overall, that there'll be love in this room. We ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
So tonight, we would like to welcome our new council member, Councilmember Sean Atkins. He was sworn in last Monday and hit the ground immediately, running, participating and attending the work session last Monday and here tonight. So welcome aboard, look forward to continuing to work with you to move our city forward, continue to move our city forward. I would be remiss if I didn't start off to this evening acknowledging the horrific gun violence incident that took place in Madison, Wisconsin today. Another senseless act of violence, more kids' lives lost, as well as the adults who were there to help educate them. And when I heard earlier today, there were some still in critical condition. There were two who had already transitioned and the gunman killed himself. And so, I definitely want us to pause for a moment of silence. Me and Mayor Satia Rose Conway serve on a federal committee together, and I was just with her a couple of months ago in Nebraska. So we're definitely extending our thoughts, our prayers, and just really for a sense of getting through this very tragic and horrific incident on a community nobody plans for this, and nobody, when it happens, it's always kind of like, you're never prepared, and what to do, what to say. But she has been leading today with a sense of compassion, calling out gun violence, as well as asking for the mental health resources and encouraging people to reach out to 988 if they are in need of mental health support and services. And so, let's pause for a moment of silence for Madison, Wisconsin, as we pray for continued just strength, comfort, and just guidance through such a tragic and horrific incident. Alright, our sergeant at arms this evening is Captain Robinson. And tonight, we have two presentations. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Shropshire. First is the Zeta Amikai.
Amikai.
Kai. I was putting K and I together. Zeta Amikai proclamation. Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. As we end the year out, I thought it would be fitting to acknowledge the work that the Zetas Amikai have done throughout our community, and how they have worked together to bridge the gap and to build stronger communities and stronger families, and making an impression on other people's lives when they give, when they do their service. So Mayor, I will turn it over to you to present them with the proclamation.
Thank you so much, and definitely in this season of Thanksgiving love and just really being kind to mankind, we pause to acknowledge the work of Zeta Amikai of East Point and all that they do continuously. They're always at East Point events, always providing services, and we greatly appreciate it. So in recognition of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Kappa Iota Zeta Chapter, Zeta Amikai of East Point, Georgia, whereas the Zeta Amikai Auxiliary is a group of professional women affiliated with Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, their mission is to assist the sorority in providing positive, proactive, and far-reaching community service on both national and international levels. And whereas the Zeta Amikai Auxiliaries are present in all eight regions of Zeta Phi Beta and continue to contribute invaluable service and financial support, helping the sorority extend its outreach to the communities where they live and serve. And whereas the Zeta Amikai of East Point was originally chartered in 1982 under the leadership of Marionette Lovejoy, its current charter was issued on December 20, 2007, under the sponsorship of Haroldine Crowder. And whereas the Zeta Amikai of East Point actively supports the initiatives of the Kappa Iota Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, as well as Zeta International Programs and Initiatives of the City of East Point, Georgia. And whereas the Zeta Amikai of East Point has been recognized as an outstanding, award-winning auxiliary with honors at state, regional, and international levels for his exceptional contributions to scholarship service and health justice. And whereas the Zeta Amikai of East Point generously give their time and talents to help improve the lives of others, and their acts of kindness help build a better and brighter future, and remind us that we all have a role to play in making our community safer, healthier, and stronger. And whereas the mission of Zeta Amikai of East Point is to serve others and bring value to the community with the vision to blaze new paths for the future through understanding the values of friendship, sisterhood, teamwork, and cooperation. And whereas the Kappa Iota Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated values the Zeta Amikai of East Point and embraces the belief that all women, regardless of their educational background, have the potential to reach their full capabilities in various aspects of their lives. Presently, the Zeta Amikai of East Point continues to strive to create unlimited leadership opportunities in the areas of business, entrepreneurship, healthcare, the arts, and governance. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dina Holiday Ingram, Mayor of the City of East Point, along with the City Council, commend the Zeta Amikai East Point Auxiliary of the Kappa Iota Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated for its proven community partnership, dedication to positive change, and steadfast commitment to empower, uplift, and serve our residents in the City of East Point. If you all could come up, I will present you.
Madam Mayor, if I could be recognized.
Yes, I want them to come up, though, while you're being recognized.
Thank you.
Is anybody, is a representative coming up?
Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me this opportunity to truly say thank you on the record for all that you beautiful young ladies do for us here. Your volunteerism is not unnoticed. We appreciate you so much, and I had to say, thank you. It's with gratitude and happiness that I really see you. And thank you, Sharon. It was truly fitting that you recognized these strong, powerful women. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to do that.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Shropshire, you want to wrap up before we turn it over to the Amikai and have a picture taken?
I think the proclamation pretty much said everything that they do, and they are truly believing sisterhood and giving to the community and service in the community.
Alright, one more time. [laughing]. Good evening to the Mayor of East Point, City Council members, our Zeta Amikai sponsors, and to my Zeta Amikai sisters. The ladies of Zeta Amikai of East Point and our sponsoring chapter, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, are deeply honored and humbled to receive this proclamation. We are proud to serve the city that offers small city charms with big city amenities. Thank you to the City of East Point for this tremendous recognition.
You are absolutely welcome. Thank you all for all that you do. Your service is invaluable, and I'm going to come down and invite council members to come with me, and we'll have photo taken. Up, Councilwoman Shropshire, Eastern Star Proclamation.
Okay, we have one more, and that is for the Eastern Stars. They also do community service as well, they volunteer their time, and they do a lot of volunteering at the city events as well. And I'll wait, and Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I'm going to actually have you all come up, go ahead and come up. I can also say about the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star that whenever there is a city event, a community outreach event, they are there in numbers, continue to support us on Wednesdays for the food distribution, and just consistently our service to the City of East Point, our initiatives and our residents. And so, we greatly appreciate you, and so I have a proclamation in recognition of the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star. Whereas the Order of the Eastern Star is a fraternal organization of women and men affiliated with the family of Freemasonry who are committed to implementing innovative ideas, facilitating positive change, and planning impactful opportunities for community service. And whereas the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star serves under the direction of Grand Matron Audrey Battle and is dedicated to improving the lives of others. And whereas the members of the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star generously give their time and talents to help improve the lives of others, and their acts of kindness help build a better and brighter future, and remind us that we all have a role to play in making our community safer, healthier, and strong. And whereas the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star members strive to be examples of fidelity, constancy, loyalty, faith, and love, and work together on projects that benefit mankind throughout the world. And whereas the City of East Point extends its sincere appreciation to the Electa Grand Chapter for the countless hours and invaluable contributions of its members that helped to ensure the success of East Point community events. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dina Holiday Ingram, Mayor of the City of East Point, along with the City Council, do hereby commend the members of the Electa Grand Chapter of the Order of the Eastern Star for their proven community partnership, dedication to positive change, and continuing to remain steadfastly committed to empower, uplift, and serve in the City of East Point. Thank you all so much.
Sit on.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Electa Grand Chapter, we would like to say thank you, Mayor and Ms. Shropshire, everyone in the east, while I say the east. But anyway, I would like to say thank you for the proclamation. On behalf of the ones that's here with us, I say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Senator Butler.
You know, I cannot say thank you enough, Ms. Brown. You know, you are always there, always there for us, and when you want to pray to the Most High, whether you pray to the east. I want to thank Sharon for bringing both of these groups to our, and allowing them to properly be recognized for the hard work you do. East Point would not be East Point without what you do. Thank you so much.
Alright, we're going to come down and present the proclamation and take a picture. Alright, do we have any committee reports from anyone on either the East Council HR Committee or the Budget and Finance Committee? Seeing none, can we get adoption of the council agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the, that we adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is approval of city council minutes from the December 2nd Meeting of the East Point City Council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the city council minute meetings from December the 2nd.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll also need minutes from the work session this past week because we took some action at the end of the meeting. We have no public hearings this night, tonight, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Alright, next one to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through seven? Yes. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is agenda item from the City Attorney's Office. Can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion of possible action on item number eight? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is not open. Attorney Wiggins.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So hopefully, in your binders, you would have received the itemized breakdown of the work. When we were here at our last meeting, that was something that we did not have, we just had a total of the items. I do want to remind you that this is a state contract for which we are piggybacking. We sought to go this route because of pricing and also the expedient nature of them able, them being able to get started. JOC Construction would be the contractor, and it's under our guardian, Gordian, I think I'm saying that right, Gordian state contract that we already are a part of. Happy to answer any questions, but the breakdown per requested, as requested, is here for you. I will also say that the capital improvement budget that we received, authority from this board already, was capped, I think, at 72. And so, we intend to remove some of these items to ensure that we remain in budget.
Councilmember Atkins.
Attorney Wiggins, just so that I'm clear, so what we have here on the agenda, an amount not to exceed 83,000, are you saying that we need to lower that because what the body has already approved is only 72,000? Is that correct?
That's what I was going to be proposing. I did recall that I spoke with procurement earlier today, who indicated that they were going to put it on the agenda, just the way you said it. And so, if the board is so inclined, we would like to go up to the higher number as to not remove any of the items. But, full disclosure, y'all already approved the lower number.
Okay.
Within your legal department budget, do you have other line items for other professional services, or other areas where you might be able to do an interdepartmental transfer to this line item if council approves it up to the requested 83,000? That's $11,000.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, upon the hiring of the Assistant City Attorney, we have been able to keep some things in-house, and so it is likely that the budget in outside council would have, potentially would have been reduced. We have spent some funds with respect to ethics attorneys, and so that did change a little bit, but I think that that could be worked out.
What date did the Deputy City Attorney start?
It was before the Thanksgiving holiday, I think it was some time in October.
So then, there's also salary savings from July 1st to the time that the Deputy City Attorney started.
That is correct.
That are also within the departmental budget that probably would not require a budget amendment if council is inclined to grant the request of 83,000. I'm sure that was more than $11,000 in salary savings alone. Any other discussion to ask is to approve the state contract with vendor JOC Construction for renovations of the City Attorney's Office not to exceed 83,000. Councilmember Martin Rogers?
Yes, I am ready to make the motion.
You can go ahead and make the motion, a second, and Councilmember.
Atkins, I'll get you on discussion.
Alright, I'd like to make the motion for approval of the vendor JOC Construction for renovations of the City Attorney's Office not to exceed 83,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion, Councilmember Atkins, and then Councilwoman Shropshire.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, so with that and the motion for not to exceed 83,000, do we need to take any action in terms of reprogramming within that department since this body has already passed, or we're good with just doing the 83,000 not to exceed?
So I'm going to have finance come up, but I am confident that there are intergovernmental, interdepartmental transfers that can be made without a budget amendment, as long as there's $11,000 there. And the salary savings, probably one month of that between July to October would more than exceed the $11,000. Mr. Golden.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. There's no additional requirement that we have to do, as long as she has the funds there, she can transfer to cover the costs.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Oh, my question was going to be, when the motion was made, was the addition of funds included? And I see that it is.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Really quick, Mr. Shannon, so you're saying that they already have the funds there within the department without having, I just wanted to verify that before we voted on this.
Yes, sir. So when it comes to capital, you know, this is the procurement of the actual items, renovation, the actual professional work can come from professional fees, so they can take that from their operations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, all those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is, need a motion to open the floor for discussion of possible action on the facade grant program to be funded by.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is open, Ms. Jess.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Macey O. Rogers is coming back to you tonight to respond to any questions you have. You all had a very in-depth and spirited conversation last meeting, and you asked for Mr. Rogers to do some organizing, wordsmithing, and he's bringing that information back. Before he starts, I would like to request that we not talk about the price at this particular time because we have some items farther down. We were able to identify some additional funds that can be used for the facade program, so, but we will address that in some of the items beneath the presentation. On the agenda, there are some other agenda items that we'll talk about.
So I think we do need to talk about these together. There are a number of steps that needed to be taken so that we could ensure that we obligate the funds, and if we're talking about obligating additional funds, so are you referring to agenda item 15?
Yes, ma'am. We can, if it's your pleasure.
So if we can have the discussion include, be a holistic discussion, I will, and then we can approve them in turn. I can determine the order of business, but it's already been set by agenda, but I think we go ahead and have the complete discussion now, and then when we get to the other item, council will be able to make a decision at that point.
Yes, ma'am.
So the update should be whether or not we could keep the program internally. If not, what organizations have we reached out to? Have those organizations had meetings? Because one person cannot bind BIDA or DDA. And we decided to go with five areas within the city, where it's A, B, C, D, and downtown. And we also decided that there would be a 25% match, so Mr. Rogers, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council, Macey O. Rogers, Department of Economic Development. Per your request from last Monday, I've put together, and you should have received over the weekend, specifically on yesterday, a facade grant plan as well as overview in draft form. Additionally, you would have received a draft proposal for an application. Additionally, you would have received a draft proposal for an application regarding the, the program itself. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it over. I can certainly hit the highlights of the, of the plan for you and take any questions from there. So the East Point facade grant overview briefly includes wards A, B, C, and D, as well as the central downtown business district. The City of East Point, Georgia is launching an outreach initiative to promote its facade grant program, aiming to encourage local businesses and property owners to enhance the appearance of their storefronts and commercial properties. This initiative will focus on building strong awareness and driving timely applications before the grant deadline. The primary goal is to ensure widespread community engagement and robust participation from East Point businesses and property owners by utilizing a strategic blend of digital marketing, direct outreach, and community partnerships. The plan will emphasize the benefits of the program, including increased property value, improved aesthetics, and community pride. I'm going to jump down a little bit to the bottom. The plan will run from December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four to February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, with key milestones, including the launch of the aforementioned marketing materials within the plan itself, social media tools, and community outreach activities. The plan will focus on last-minute reminders and urgency-driven messaging to encourage applications before the deadline. The last paragraph, the expected outcomes include an increased awareness of the facade grant program across East Point, a significant rise in applications from local businesses and property owners, and strengthened community participation in city improvement initiatives, fostering economic growth and civic pride by ensuring, by, by combining innovative marketing, strong community outreach, and strategic follow-ups. This plan will ensure the facade grant program is accessible and appealing to all businesses, participants, setting the stage for visible and impactful improvements in East Point's commercial areas. Some of the highlights include, this is broken down in four, into four phases. There are two important dates, the start date, which is that of December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and the end date of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. It's broken down into four phases. The first phase would be preparation and initial outreach, which would begin two days after today, pending the approval of the plan, which would be Wednesday, January eighth. That's where we will convene internal departments, along with Economic Development, Communications Department, the contracted PR firms, Kathy Warren LLC, Design Show Marketing, and the IT Department, Web Team. And probably also included with that group would be the Planning Department. We will discuss what is really needed from the plan in terms of taking initial asset of assessment of where we are with things that the respective departments might be working on right now, so we would prioritize that. And then, of course, it goes into social media planning, December nineteenth through the twentieth, city website update, December twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh, outreach database compilation, December thirtieth through January eighth, twenty-twenty-five, community outreach briefing, January eighth, twenty-twenty-five. And then, of course, we get into the Phase Two, active marketing and outreach, January sixth through January tenth of twenty-twenty-five. That includes social media campaign launch on, launch on January sixth through the tenth, and that would be followed by January eighth, announcement of the program, January seventh, post testimonials from past recipients of the small business grant awards. This would require a short video clip from two or three of the awardees regarding the city's commitment to small business. Conduct a, conduct a live Q and A session on Facebook and Instagram to answer questions in real time. Fly distribution on January tenth, email blast on January tenth, community partnerships January tenth. This would include the ATL Airport, ATL Airport Chamber, as well as the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce. Phase Three, intensified promotion and follow-up, starting January tenth through the fourteenth of February. We would have some messaging regarding a theme, really instilling the pride of kicking the new year off great with respect to urging businesses to participate in the facade program. We would go live with the, with the website on January fifteenth. There would be local media outreach on the fifteenth as well. And then, of course, we would have targeted follow-ups from some of those businesses that we, we would likely have gotten questions from regarding the plan earlier on, and we would follow up with them to make sure, if we hadn't gotten or received an application from them, to make sure that they are planning on submitting by or before the, the deadline date, which would be that of February fourteenth. And then, of course, there would be a final social media push, February eleventh, share posts, spotlighting, a markup transformative of possible improvements, countdown-style posting highlighting three days left, for example, to apply, just to, again, increase the awareness and urgency of getting applications in upon the last minute. And then, of course, that final day, the urgency of posting a last-day reminder, this is it, please apply before five o'clock PM, for example, that day. And then, of course, from the Phase Four task, or list of tasks, we would do a post-deadline activity, starting on the seventeenth of February, which would be tracking evaluations, and then, of course, looking at the required resources for carrying out the, the actual plan. Mayor and Council, that is a briefing of the, of the plan, and I'm prepared to take any questions that you might have.
So the key question is whether or not we can keep it internally, and who do we have to contract with?
And that's what I was gonna ask.
Like, that's the key action steps?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the memorandum of understanding that we have listed in fifteen, number fifteen, we have the ability for the MOU to be between the mayor and council and the Department of Economic Development. It's an intergovernmental agreement, and we will be able to offer you some of the involvement, I believe, that you mentioned, that you all wanted to be involved. We have looked at this. There are other jurisdictions that use the similar MOUs. You will also have the ability, if should you desire, to work with BIDA and the DDA. Both of those entities met, and they are in agreement in working with the city in this effort.
I'll, I'll let, thank you, Ms. Jess. Councilmember Butler, Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie, my question then is for you, a follow-up question. So is it that we do not have to have a MOU with BIDA and the DDA?
I'm not sure how that would look as we, if you decide that we want to use them. I'm sure that there would have to be some type of an agreement, but for purposes of obligating these funds by December thirty-first, the intergovernmental agreement will satisfy that for now. What we do subsequently, we, that would be up to the department and the council.
So I just want to summarize, just to make sure that I'm hearing it correctly. In order to satisfy the terms of the ARPA funds provided by the federal government, it is okay for us to have a MOU from the city council to our Economic Development Department?
Department, yes, sir.
And so that's all that we need to keep those funds, and I have to send them back?
Yes, sir.
Are there any legal requirements with that MOU that makes it compliant?
We had that reviewed by the city attorney, so I'll let her talk about that.
All right, so the federal government has allowed local government some flexibility with obligating the ARPA funds, and so there is an entire rule and fact sheet that was issued back March, I think, twenty-twenty-three, that talks about how you can obligate the funds inter-agency. I know Ms. Jessie said inter-governmental, but it would be inter-agency, so within our city. And so the MOUs that are in your book are going to be final forms that have all of the necessary provisions that would meet that final rule. And so I got in a draft from staff and then reviewed it, revised it, sent it back out to be put in the agenda to ensure it meets the rule issued by the, the Federal Register.
My follow-up question is, in the MOU, does it have, do we have to have a breakdown of the funds per ward or just a general?
No, no, that's not necessary.
So that's something that we can still decide upon?
Correct.
Thank you.
That'll be a part of the plan overview or how you guys want to split it up. But to obligate them to meet the thirty-first deadline, the MOU is sufficient.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Just really quick, I know we're talking about the MOU, and this is on item number fifteen on the agenda, but I did notice, I might be getting ahead of you guys, it says not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. And so I guess, I'm assuming we found funds, are we gonna get into the details later? Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. My question is this, if we do the MOU and it's between the council and Economic Development, then we don't need BIDA or the DDA to be part of it? It could just stay in-house. And I think that's the conversation, the piece that I didn't hear. So the MOU would be between Economic Development and the city council. And the Economic Development, what role would you play in taking the applications? And how will that, how would you do all of that?
Yes, ma'am. So we would, we would form a team, an evaluation committee.
Who would be the evaluation committee?
Would be made up of the Planning Department, Economic Development, Communications, likely contracts and procurement in-house. And we would discuss as well, now, we could also engage our PR firms in this process as well, or we could just utilize their services with respect to all of the digital marketing and fly design aspects of the, the plan itself. But it would be an internalized team that we would formulate, getting started as early as the eighteenth, just with initial review and overview of the plan pending the approval.
So the timeline would be the eighteenth of January?
The, the kickoff, the launch of the application would be January fifteenth, and the deadline to get your application in would be the fourteenth of February. Now, that might sound a little bit aggressive. We can push that, we have a little wiggle room, but I wanted to make sure that once the process got started, this would be something that we would start early in the year and finish by end of the year. There might be instances where as there is a six-month timeframe in which to get the, the project by each awardee, for example, finished within six months, there may be circumstances where they ask for or request an extension on that timeframe. It could be up to an additional sixty days, so two months additional time to complete their project. But to be sure or to ensure that the project is finished within the year, so that we don't go into twenty-twenty-six with, you know, projects still be, being done.
And, and I kind of like the fact that it's staying in-house, and I like the fact that it is part of, planning and zoning will be part of the process, because then they would, they could help with those planning and zoning questions. Whatever people want to do, they won't run into the roadblocks. They'll know what they need to get the project started and to make sure that the project is completed. And they won't have the hassle of the roadblocks that we hear about when it comes to doing business in, in the city, you know? So, okay, thank you.
And, and one more little addition to that, Councilwoman, city manager's office would also be involved.
But, and I would assume the city manager office would be overseeing the project, overseeing the, the work or the scope of things?
Yes, ma'am. We have built-in updates to the mayor and council, so to keep you apprised of the activities, how everything is going, and the monitoring that will be done by the Economic Development staff.
And is, is legal department in any way part of this as well? Because that might be something to consider as well.
Yes, ma'am. So the agreements between the, the city and the awardees, that would be a craft, crafted by our city attorney's office, so that because everyone, with respect to receiving the, the grant, would have to sign off and be in agreement with the rules of the application itself and the overall process, receiving the money, the funds, making sure that the receipts are in order, so that for auditing purposes, the, the funding is accounted for when it's time to report.
Councilmember Atkins.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question of Ms. Jessie. So I did, I believe, heard, heard you say, or hear you say, that DDA and BIDA met for, because if we're talking in-house, what would their role then be in for the, for them to have a need to meet about this particular project or these funds?
I'm going to let Macio answer that, but we were trying to cover the bases, as make sure that we had someone, if the inter-agency agreement didn't meet the legal muster, that we would have some other avenue. We do not want to send money back.
Okay, all right. And, and so there's a time certain of the funds have to be spent, correct? Mr. Rogers?
Yes, so obligation by end of this, this month, and there is a two-year maximum timeframe for the funds to be exhausted. Again, we will not wait for that amount of time. We would like to have all of the awardees, if they accept the grant, to get their project started within sixty days of receiving their, their, their award, and have it complete within a six-month timeframe. We do know that there might be exceptions to that, but they would request that in writing. We would review that as an evaluation committee, and then, of course, vote to, to, to receive or to approve of the requested extension.
Okay. So my next question then is of capacity. And so you feel certain that your department and the other departments would collaboratively have the capacity to be able to roll this out, meet all the deadlines, and we wouldn't have to engage any of our authorities?
So we will be talking this through on Thursday. As you well know, we, we are, we are pretty thin across the board from all departments.
Right.
The initial request was to have some built- The initial request was to have some built-in amount of funding that we could go out and hire a, someone to facilitate or assist this process. But since we, and that was just based on human capital. Knowing that every department is really thin at this point, and we, we don't have everyone on board as we would like to, you know, this plan with rather aggressive timeframes is doable, but we will need to talk that through with all involved to make sure that we can, we ensure that this grant process with its timelines are able to be carried out. And so to your question, Councilman, you know, I'm optimistic, but cautiously, because I do know that we, all departments, and I've not had a chance to speak to any of them, with the exception of communications, and we had a lengthy conversation about this on Friday, as well as earlier in the week. And that was the, that was the main point that we discussed. And so we had communication earlier this morning and stated, well, upon the approval, we would have this initial meeting to convene all those involved and to talk it through to see how we can get this done.
Okay. And really, that was a line of my questioning, really around human capacity, the fact that, as you just mentioned, to use your phrase, you know, the departments are fairly thin. So even if the department as the lead needed additional support and were able to provide all of the oversight for those dollars, would we still not consider that to be in-house if we used any of our authorities? If there, if there had to be, if we've got to meet deadlines for spending, making sure all the applications are out, we get those back, they're reviewed, they're assessed, and all of those things, and the projects move forward?
Yes. I would certainly consider that in-house. They are part of East Point. And we do have members who, at least from the authority representation with respect to the chairs, who could also have a participating role in this process. And that would give us some additional support. These are all volunteers, of course, as you well know, and certainly we could utilize that if we had that as part of it. But if not, then we would certainly make do with what we have as best we can.
Okay. But you would let the body know if you're running into issues with capacity?
Yes, because this will, this will become a very loud and clear, I guess, discussion on Wednesday. I know that the timing is kind of critical as well. This is going into holiday season, and I'm very aware that many people will be on vacation, such as what I'm experiencing in my department. And I know that would likely be the case with others as well. So keeping that all in mind, there may be some adjustments that I will have to come back and tweak with this plan just because of the timing. But we will get it done. It might be pulling teeth and, you know, really stretching it, but we will, we will get it done as best we can. It's just, it's the nature of where we are right now.
Okay, thank you.
So is the amount 350,000, 600,000, or 950,000?
It's 600,000.
Okay. So it would increase from 350 to 600. So once, if approved tonight, then the option of still exploring, working with DDA and BIDA is still available to us. It's just not an immediate decision that has to be made?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other discussion, general discussion on this, we will deal with the MOU when we get to item number 15. If nothing else on this one, let's go to, until item 15, I should say. Let's go to item number 10, planning and zoning. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Madam Mayor, Kimberly Smith will come up for item number 10, rezoning request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kimberly Smith, Director of Planning and Community Development. In reference to this item, case number P2024RZ-008. In reference to case number P2024RZ-006-08, a rezoning request for property located at 2928 Palm Drive to rezonate property from R1A District to R3 District. In reference to the work session meeting that we have and the discussion in reference to the rezoning, the applicant actually sent in a request for a deferral. We wanted to briefly just go over the case. While we do not object to the deferral request, we just wanted to go over some of the items that we discussed with the applicant on Friday afternoon. But a quick overview, the applicant is Keith Logan, the current zoning is R1A, which is our urban residential district, and again, the applicant is seeking a rezoning from R1A to R3. This is some of the property information in reference to the current site. The property is about 0.32 acres, 14,000 square feet in area. There are two properties located on site. One of the properties was built in 1948, the other one in 1955. The square footage of the first property is approximately 969 square feet in area, and the second property, the second property on site is about 750 square feet in area. The current zoning is R1A. If you take a look at this zoning map, you see the highlighted square in the light blue, that's the subject property. And if you take a look at it, you see that it's about twice the size as its surrounding properties. Just want to take a note of that. The future land use designation is redevelopment neighborhood, which accounts for typical zoning districts of R1A, R2, RT, and R3, which is what the applicant is asking for. However, Planning Commission and zoning recommended denial of the R3 because of the density and it's completely out of character with what type of land uses are currently there, which is single-family homes. We did meet with the applicant. While the applicant was not amenable to R2 when they initially submitted the application, after speaking with them on Friday, they are now amenable to R2, which is R2 family zoning district classification. If you could go to the next slide, just want to compare quickly. Staff still recommends denial of the R3 multifamily because we believe that we would like to protect from spot zoning and to preserve the character of the neighborhood based on the size of the property. Like I said, it's twice the size as the surrounding properties. Potentially, the density could be built out to 17.5 units per acre. So we want to protect against that. R2, however, is R2 family district. What this would do is provide for the current site as is. It would bring it into compliance with the two structure. It would bring it into compliance with the R2 zoning district if this body would look at R2 instead of the R3. It also would bring the current status into a non-conformant status. It would bring it into compliance. As of now, it's a legal non-conformant property with the two properties on site under the R1A. And the R2 zoning district would also protect against the higher density that will be allowed by R3. The applicant is not here tonight. We do not object to deferring this to next month, but we just wanted to go over our discussions that we had with the applicant on Friday morning.
Thank you. Any discussion, any question? Councilmember Butler?
So, Madam Smith, excuse me.
Would you like for us to consider using the R2 zoning tonight, or should we wait for deferral?
We will leave that up to the discretion of Mayor and Council. We have no objection. The applicant did request a deferral, and he's not present, so I would leave that up to you all.
Thank you.
I don't see any other lights on. What's the purpose of a deferral?
He's, he sent the email on Friday, on Friday evening, so we...
No, he was here last Monday, and he knew we were going to potentially make a decision tonight. And we're, I'm just trying to figure out what's going to happen between now and a deferral. Like, the options are to approve or deny or approve the R2. Like, is there going to be any new information? Is there going to be any, what would be the purpose of the deferral?
I can't think of any purpose.
The only, the only thing we discussed Friday, which gave him options, were basically with respect to the ADU. And after seeing the size of the structures, we basically shared with him that that was not an option, for the most part.
The second unit is too large?
It's over the 50%. Yes, ma'am.
Council, Shropshire.
Yes, that, that was also my question. And so I don't, what would we gain in a deferral? Because clearly, the amount of the square footage, as you just mentioned, is over the requirements for that to qualify. And so I don't know what we gain from now to then. So that was my question. That's why I turned my light off.
Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. So my question is this, he has, it's, so there's another option, R2? Okay. And what would be? So basically, what we're here for tonight is to grant, grant him to defer, defer?
Counsel can take action on it this evening?
Or we don't have to?
Or you don't have to.
Okay, okay. Because if you vote, then he would have to wait, what?
Till next month.
Six, next month to come back? Or is it 60 days? Okay, well, let him come back next month if you want to defer.
I think one challenge, unless it's just not on the online agenda, I don't see the ordinance for the R2.
That's correct. It's, it's not on, because staff recommended denial, so we did not prepare on. That's correct.
On the R2?
It's not on.
We don't, because they recommended denial, we don't have an ordinance to approve a R2. We don't have any, to my, I mean, I don't see it online. I'm not sure if it's just didn't make the attachments, but attorney, what?
So, just for clarification, so the application was for R3. That's what a public hearing was on. The staff was going to recommend denial of the R3. In evaluating the application, they made a determination that a R2 would fit the property better, which would still require rezoning, because right now it's R1A. And so I'm not sure if the property owner knows or doesn't know about the staff's desire to potentially suggest the R2.
They do.
He does know, and he still asked for a deferral, and he still asked for the deferral, knowing that you guys would suggest an R2? Okay. So that's not the reason. It could possibly be, Madam Mayor, that he may not want a R2, right? I just, so I think a deferral probably is appropriate, just because he's not here to speak on, you know, this change direction of what he originally asked for. The other thing is, I know I talked with Director Smith and Mr. Kelly about this last week, and the question was whether or not he needs to start the process all over again to ask for a R2. The council could, I don't know if it would be prudent, now I'm changing my mind from what I said last week, to do an approval tonight to the R2, because that's, the public didn't hear that, right? The public didn't hear R2 language and didn't have a chance to weigh in on that. Still a rezoning, it's within your purview to not go with the staff's recommendation and do something else. But for 100% transparency, then it may be prudent to have a new public hearing with the R2, provided the applicant wants to go that route. We don't know, because he's not here to be able to answer that. And so as opposed to just denying it flat out, which would leave him with a whole year before he could reapply, not take action on it, allow there to be an opportunity for the public to be heard on a R2 with the applicant's consent that that's what he even wants to change his application to.
So applications can be changed even at this juncture? Like, a new application is not required, it's a totally different ass?
There hasn't been a final decision? Yes, I would say they can. It hasn't been a final decision. I don't think it's a problem if he changed it. Otherwise, we would need to make a decision.
And then?
Right? But then he couldn't apply, right? Because we would have denied it. So I think it can be changed.
But we would have to do another public hearing?
Yes. I would say for, out of, obviously, the transparency to the public is to do a public hearing so that the staff can present the R2 conditions, the R2 zoning, and what would that look like for their neighborhood.
And so that wouldn't be the next meeting, their notice requirements that we have to comply with, and it would come back at whatever appropriate legal juncture after legal notice?
It could possibly make the third meeting in January, because it's 15 to 45 days, depending on when we can get it to the public, I mean, to the paper.
But tonight, we could just agree to, council could do a motion to defer it, and then staff determine when it comes back? Or do we need to defer to a date certain?
Defer to a date certain. I guess I would need to ask Ms. Smith, though, about running the ad to have another public hearing. Could it make it for January?
If I, if we advertise tomorrow?
That's a push.
And that would be, that would be for the third Monday?
So why don't we put it on the January work session for updating status, and you'll tell us when the public hearing will be, if it's going to be on the third, Thursday in Jan, I mean, third Monday in January, or the first Monday and Tuesday? Like, so it could be deferred?
To a date certain?
To come back to us at either first meeting in January or a work session. I guess maybe the first meeting in January in case action wants to be taken. And then you all can give us an update. And if it, if the notice has been publicized for a public hearing, you can provide that information, and we'll know what date is coming back before us.
Question. If staff makes a recommendation for R2, and, and we create an ordinance for R2, this is a legal question.
Tonight?
No, ma'am. Can't the council vote on that without it being re-advertised?
Because if you want to change the recommendation, yeah, I guess it's still the road.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I think the concern is the public was not aware that this was going to be a R2. They were aware about an R3.
So yes, but that was with them giving the, I thought they were giving the recommendation to deny the So, yes, but that was with them giving the, I thought they were giving the recommendation to deny the R3.
They were, but the public hearing was on the R3.
So, so, yes, then I'm back to my earlier thing that we should do the, 'cause you're trying to avoid the public hearing.
Um, we're not trying to avoid the public hearing, we're trying to find out if Mayor and Council has the authority to downzone.
I say, I, I think they do, but then, my second half of that was, the mayor just reminded me of, is that the public hasn't heard about the R2.
It would be at the discretion of Council and your advice, so.
Yep.
I, I yield.
I, I think what's clear tonight, we can't act on it, 'cause we don't have an ordinance, 'cause it was anticipated to be denied. So, it's, we don't have anything to act on tonight, so at minimum, it's going to January 6th. And then, if you all feel like we can downzone without a public hearing, we could do it on the 6th, or we could, you could give us an update on the notification of the public hearing. Councilmember.
Travis Sharon.
Councilmember Butler, and Councilman.
Thank you. I would rather wait until we get the information, until a public hearing is set. I don't want to make a decision without public input. And my next question is, based on the January meeting, this will be an in-person meeting where people can come in person and speak?
So, the public hearing would be your public hearing, not planning and zoning?
No, 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 planning and zoning public hearing, 'cause I know we voted for them to go back in person. So, it will be advertised in person.
The public hearing, the public hearing, we're speaking out for this, would be the council's public hearing. But yes, planning and zoning is going back in person for their regular meetings, not the work sessions.
So, they wouldn't have any CZI meetings?
No.
You're talking about this case?
I'm not sure, maybe, well, let's verify.
Are you speaking of this case, or are you speaking in general?
This case, because if you're going to change the zoning, then you would get, have that communication, where the postcards are mailed out to the residents. So, it'll only be one public hearing, it wouldn't be the CC, what is it? Okay, okay.
Councilmember.
I make the motion that we defer this to have it come back to work session in January, where staff will then give us an update on whether it has been advertised or not.
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? Councilmember. Acting.
No, I'm fine with the deferral, but I mean, my only question was, I know that we're talking about, uh, council having the ability to downzone, but Madam Attorney, wouldn't this, if we did have an ordinance for R2, wouldn't that be an upzoning? So, it really wouldn't be from R1A to R2, so that's really an upzoning. So, I think that it is safer to go through the process, because the public needs to have the ability to weigh in.
So, my other thing was, in the event that we decided to act, but because it's an upzoning, we won't be able to, so you'll let us know the public hearing date on the work session, correct? All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? All those, any opposed? One, two, three. Yeah, we still have five. Motion carries. Next up, item number 11, can we get a motion to open the floor for a discussion and possible action?
I make a motion that we open the floor for council approval of the JAG 2024 MOU in the amount of $35,103.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is open, Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm asking our police chief, Sean Buchanan and Shannon Golden to come up and address this issue.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor. I think, I think we just, she made a motion to approve it. Yes.
She made the motion to approve it, and we voted on it.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager, real quick. Uh, we get this grant every year from the federal government, we use it for our youth camp during the summer. We offer a free youth camp, that's about, uh, seven weeks long, and that's where the funds are used every year.
So, this item was not on the work session. Uh, we got an email that it was added to this agenda. Madam City Clerk, was this the one added?
Yes, this was added.
Correct, so, thanks for, um, that, staff doesn't have to put items on the work session before it comes to us, but that's why I wanted you to share with the public what it is, and it's already been approved. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for continuing to provide that program. Next up, item number 12, can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, I am asking Malcolm, Malcolm Mitchell and Shannon Golden to come up and address this issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. This item is a MOU for the municipal court. Uh, we budgeted ARPA funds for the municipal court to do renovation work. That renovation work includes renovation of the municipal court, as well as furniture and fixtures. And I have Malcolm here to explain any additional requests that you may have.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Malcolm Mitchell is the Court Services Manager.
Court Administrator.
Court Administrator.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we, we have about $5.5 million worth of these memos on here tonight. This is, if you add all of them together, actually, I need to take out 350, so 5.1.
Yes, ma'am.
So, are all of these inter-agency agreements, is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion or action from Council? Councilmember Butler.
So, this is the MOU to do the, to force to do the renovations. A contractor has not been provided yet, correct?
True, but this MOU gives us the right to obligate the funds to do the renovations at a later time. He can come to council and provide that contract and all those details at a later date. But this obligates the city manager's office and the court for these funds.
Thank you.
Councilmember acting.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor. Um, I just heard your response to Councilmember Butler, that a contractor has not been selected, but is, are you anticipating also piggybacking on the state contract to get the best possible price for this?
Yes.
Okay. The question was about the state contract, to piggyback on that, just as the city attorney's office is using? Because they realize great savings from that, when we do use the state contract.
Councilmember Butler.
I was just having a conversation with Ms. Jesse. I have a different opinion on that. I would like for us to start to bid more of these projects out, so that we can get local vendors to participate more in these projects. And that's my opinion about all of this money that we're spending.
So, there are two opinions, it's operational, this council has an option of taking action to decide which way to go, or it will continue to be operational, and state piggyback contracts are something that cities across the state use. It's a permissible procurement process, but there are two different, two councilmembers have expressed two different opinions, and staff can't operate off that, there hasn't been a directive of council, regardless of conversations with the city manager. And so, council has an option to take official action, or staff can continue to operate as it has been operating, um, because one person, a directive can't come from one, it has to be at least five votes. Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you. So, it's my understanding, this has to go out for a bid, so do we get more than one? I guess contracted to have a chance to, I guess, price this out, or? Is that not how it works?
So, we piggyback off?
State contracts, the state does procurement and approves, pre-approves a list of vendors, that you all can go for, is that how it works? So, we wouldn't be doing another solicitation, we're relying on the solicitation and list of vendors that the state has already done.
Okay.
That's why they call it a piggyback, to piggyback off of that.
And I'm assuming, uh, Madam City Attorney, uh, what you mentioned earlier, I know you realize some savings, was that through the piggyback, the state approved, huh? All right, thank you.
Councilmember acting.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, um, I know that, as the mayor has stated, there are sort of two thoughts here. Uh, I know that Councilmember Butler would like to see it, to go out to bid to more local vendors. Um, the reason I was requesting and asking about the piggyback is really for that very reason, as how the city attorney's office has realized such great savings. I just would like for us to be very prudent stewards of the tax dollars that we have. While I would like to see businesses in East Point thrive, but if their quote is gonna be quite higher than what we're able to realize from the state, that gives us more dollars to be able to use for other projects within the city, for the betterment of our operations, and to provide greater services, or even other renovations that we may need to do um, here at our city government.
Understood, and, uh, just in experience, generally, local contractors were more, more expensive. Um, uh, just from experience, general contractors, and looking at doing this previously, general contractors were, of course, more expensive. Uh, local, smaller businesses, you know, so they're generally more expensive. And with the state contract, the, um, the state rep actually comes out with the contract company. Um, and the initial visit, they make sure that they're looking at the same picture, and make sure it's, uh, competitive.
Councilmember Travis.
Thank you. So, what we, what you all are here for is just the MOU tonight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, here's my thought. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the piggyback, federal government does it all the time. They can look at both options, to see what works best for, uh, the city. Or what, what worked best, or who's gonna do to, who's gonna provide the better service. We could take this building. We, there, there are issues with this building, and there are problems. So, for me, it's what works best for that department. If you see that is feasible to piggyback, and that vendor has done great work with no complaints, then fine. But if you see that there's a local minority vendor here in the city that can provide the same service for the same amount, then you go with that. But like the mayor said, that's operational, and you do wanna give everybody a chance to have that opportunity. And we talk about, uh, matter of fact, we have a local, local vendors' preference ordinance. So, that's probably something that we also need to look into as well, because we do need to start utilizing what we have, um, I think, which will be better for the city. But, uh, I think right now, we're, we are here for the MOU, and, um, so that's my stance.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, thank Councilmember Travis, I agree, we're here to vote on the MOU. The fact is, you don't know who's gonna be cheaper till you put out a bid.
So, so, again, I think, if y'all wanna have a work session discussion about this later, so be it. Tonight, we're here on the MOU. If the city gets into the habit of putting out solicitations for local vendors, and then the state contracts are already there, the vendors are already available, they can already get that information, and if the state vendors end up being low, lower than the local vendors, and we get into a practice of putting out solicitations and not going with people, that's gonna cause a problem, too. So, I don't know what the solve is, maybe it's a, um, discussion, once we have a permanent city manager, um, and sit, have a strategic planning retreat, and, you know, really start getting some govern, some, um, leadership with a permanent city manager in place, we can either wait till then, we can discuss it at the work session. Um, but this, there is not a, you could do it, and it could be higher than the state, you could do it. It could be lower than the state, but if you put out solicitations and don't award bids to people because you then piggyback on the state, it's gonna be problematic. If you do local solicitations, and it costs more, then we're spending more of taxpayers' dollars for services that we could get for less. So, it's a conundrum that operationally needs to be solved, if this council wants to, um, make that decision around no longer using state piggyback contracts as a permissible, um, procurement option, as other cities utilize in the state. That'll be something that would have to be voted on, and would probably need further discussion, and more thought around the implications of prohibiting or preventing piggybacks, one type of procurement that is permissible. So, but, tonight on the agenda, they're asking for us to approve this MOU so that we can obligate these ARPA funds, so that they won't be returned. Councilmember. Martin Rogers.
Yes, I was gonna make the motion, if council is ready. Motion to approve the MOU regarding obligation of SLRF, SLFRF funds. ARPA renovations for the court department not to exceed $675,000.
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded, any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number 12, can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, we just did 12. 13, I didn't put my check mark.
Um, I would like to open the floor for discussion and possible action in the MOU regarding the obligation of the SLFRF funds, ARPA funds for the E911 Center Equipment Enhancement and Prisoner Transportation, Transport for the Police Department, not to exceed $495,000.
So moved is?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is open, Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, Chief of Police Buchanan and Shannon Golden are here to discuss this item.
Just real quick, our police van that we transport inmates to Fulton County back and forth, it's been down for a year, so we need a van, we've already got a price for it, in terms of our communications 911 center, is this the 911 center?
Yes.
So, for our 911 center, we had to have new consoles, we already got the pricing, so it'd be way under 400 some thousand, I think total is 275. And the evidence room, yes. So, it's still under the 495.
All right, see any other lights? Any action? Councilmember.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number 13.
Second. Been moved improperly seconded, any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number 14, motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we open the floor for discussion, discussion and possible action on the MOU regarding the obligations of the SLFRF funds, ARPA funds for the fire equipment and fire station number five renovation.
and fire station number five renovation for the fire department not to exceed, what is that?
Still moved, is there a second?
Present.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is now open, Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, we have representatives from finance and fire to talk about this item.
Okay. In regards to this item, this is for fire station number five renovation of the fire department. It also includes fire equipment that the fire department recognized that they need in the fire station. So total of this funding request was 1.2 million.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jesse. Are you still?
No.
Okay.
Question, fire station number five is on Washington Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion, or action? For Martin Rogers.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve an MOU regarding obligation of SLFRF funds, ARPA, fire equipment and fire station number five renovation for this fire department not to exceed $1,298,193.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number 16. Motion to open the floor for discussion of possible action.
I'm in.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at 15, I haven't even turned the page to 16. Thank y'all. Item number 15.
Yes. Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Shropshire.
I make a motion that we open, we've already had discussion, do we?
Aye.
Okay, that's 15. Council discussion of possible action on the MOU regarding obligations of the SLFRS funds, ARPA funds, facade program for the Economic Development Department not to exceed $600,000.
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, Maceo Rogers is back up to discuss this item along with Shannon Golden. And Shannon will talk about the additional funds that we were able to budget for this item.
Alright. In regards to this item, initially, we had 350,000 funds budgeted for the facade program. But after we submitted our last report update, it came to our attention that there were additional funds available. And so we were able to add 250,000 to this 350, and so a total of 600,000 for the facade program.
When you say 250,000 was available, so the total amount I have after we do all of these is 5,145,012. Is that the balance of the ARPA account right now?
Yes, ma'am. That's the balance of the ARPA account.
Any questions, discussion, or action? Councilmember Mitchell.
Just curious, do I want to know where it came from? What did the extra 250 come from?
So when we, just a background on it, with the ARPA funds, we had 13.1 million. Two tranches of 6.5 million apiece. You know, when we spend these funds, we budget it every year. So what happens sometimes is you have a little lag there when we report versus when we actually have to, you know, account for it. So there's a lag there. So we were able to find the funds available that makes up that 5.1, 5.1 million. So 2.0, I'm sorry, 250,000 in addition, additional funds. We had additional funds available, so we wanted to make sure that we encompass and obligate everything. So you'll see 250 here being added to the facade program and then on number 16, you'll see additional amounts being added to that program as well. I'm sorry, not 16, but 17 added to that program as well. And those encompass all ARPA funds that were provided to the city of East Point.
Okay, great job. I think that'll be helpful, so thank you guys.
Welcome.
Any further questions, discussion, or action? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU regarding obligation of SLFRF funds for the program for the Economic and Development Department not to exceed $600,000.
Second for discussion, I have a quick question.
Properly seconded discussion, Councilmember Shropshire.
So once we approve this, Mr. Rogers, when are you going to bring back the, how it will be divided in the neighborhoods, in the wards?
Well, we can be prepared, Councilwoman, to bring this back on January 6.
Okay. And you'll have a breakdown of the amount of money what goes to each ward and downtown?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Buck.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and we don't decide this tonight, but this is for my colleagues too. The, we are already doing streetscape improvements in downtown, so that's something that we should consider too, and so we decide how we divvy up these funds.
I think that's a good point, and we have T-Splas, LMIG, and other grant funds throughout the city providing additional enhancements or repairs and renovations. So we should be looking at citywide and again, East Point, I mean downtown belongs to all of us, every resident, all wards. It is something that we need to invest in to ensure that our residents have a place and space to gather and enjoy quality of life activities and events and live and all of those different things within our city without having to travel. And so it's not just downtown where those investments are being made, they're being made throughout the city. And so I think we should be looking at all of it holistically and understand that downtown belongs to all of us. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item number 16. Councilmember Martin Rogers.
I'd like to make a motion for discussion and possible action on the MOU regarding the obligation of the SLFRF funds, playground equipment and park improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department not to exceed $1,510,000.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion?
Discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is now open, Ms. Jesse.
Madam Mayor, members of Council, Shalor Pinkett is going to discuss these improvements and for the additional funds.
Real quick, with Parks and Rec, these funds, these are ARPA funds that were approved, adopted in the budget. Shalor can talk about the details of it, but it is 1.5 million. 1.3 million of it is for park improvements and 115 is for vehicles.
Yep. Alright. Good evening, Mayor, Council. As Shannon just mentioned, we've been going really hard since the new budget. Although it's 1.5 million, we have about $900,000 of these funds already with contracts and working. We have like another $650,000 roughly to disperse out, as Ms. Shropshire said earlier, about making it equitable throughout the city. What we've done so far, we've purchased vehicles. We got, it's about a 14-week order on the playground equipment for ADA accessible equipment that we've already purchased. The remaining funds that we have, we'll be doing some things over in Ward D. That's one of the last spaces that we have not done anything. But as of today, we've done pretty much everything in every ward with the funds so far. And a lot of construction will be going forward in the next few months. And we do have a couple solicitations going out as well, starting in January. But I'm here to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. And my question was going to be, what parks are you going to make the improvement in the playground equipment for?
So as of December, November 18th, we did new playground improvements in all city parks. That was the ADA accessible equipment that we added. That was already approved on a previous agenda. We've been doing work over at Brookdale with demolishing the bathroom, but we've pretty much touched every park. The remaining funds that we're gonna use will be to start engineering design work for Commerce Park, which is a green space that's undeveloped in Ward D. Rantin Park, we'll be doing a new playground and a complete new renovation. We're also looking at Sykes Park, the pavilions down in the Lower Bowl have a lot of work, a lot of graffiti, and different things like that will be refreshing those spaces as well.
So what did you do for Center Park and Sumner Park?
Yeah, so with Center Park, we'll be putting that solicitation out at the beginning of the year. I have the construction docs for that. We've already purchased the playground in a previous agenda, but we already have the construction docs. Our procurement wanted to put out solicitations at the top of the year so we can get multiple vendors to bid on it. As far as Sumner Park goes, we've already approved through council the staircase that was damaged. They're currently cleaning up, gracing, and we'll be looking to do some additions to the playground over there as well.
So the, there has been no equipment added to Sumner Park? No playground equipment?
Not yet, it's a 14-week order on that. So December 18th, you all approve for the city playgrounds, but it takes 14 weeks for the playground equipment to come.
Okay, because I'm always hearing, and I know all the parks belong to everybody, but I'm always hearing about the parks being renovated in Ward B and it's almost like Ward A, Ward C, and Ward D go lacking. So I wanted to know.
I mean, I can give you.
Where's the equipment?
Yeah, I can give you a list of all of the parks, but we've pretty much renovated over the last three years, all the parks between A, B, and C. Ward D, we have to do construction development for that land, so that's what we're working on moving into early 2025.
But see, when you say renovated, I'm thinking that you've installed new equipment for the playground, you fixed the grills or replaced the barbecue grills, you fixed the pavilion, then there's the pavilion around the rose garden that needs to be repaired. And so when I hear you say renovate, I'm thinking you've made those renovations.
Well, I mean, we can actually go by the park and I can kind of tell you what we've done. We've completely renovated Eagan Park, we completely renovated Colonial. Sumner Park is, that's the specific question. We've done the dog park, the tennis court, we're repairing the stairs, we got new playground equipment coming, and we're currently cleaning up, gracing.
Are you?
Councilmember, Ms. Jesse, did you have something to add? No problem, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you so much for your presentation. And I love that we're spending a lot of money in our parks. I do believe that we are looking forward to the 10-year comprehensive plan from the Parks and Rec Department. Where are we on that?
I'm glad you asked. So I met with them on last week. We were waiting for the last chair to be filled. You all were receiving emails from Foresight Group in the coming weeks on surveys for things that you all want to see and other key constituents. And then after we get those surveys back, we'll be doing ward meetings to talk about what the residents would like to see in their wards as it pertains to parks and green spaces.
I haven't touched it.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. But yeah, so you all will be receiving emails very shortly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your presentation. I just wanted you to elaborate a little more on that South Commerce Drive green space. And then the playground equipment, I believe Councilmember Shropshire mentioned this early on. Are some of those, is some of that playground equipment and park improvements beneficial to the special needs population?
Yes, if we go back and look at the notes as it pertains to special needs.
Okay.
December 18th, all of the city parks receive ADA accessible equipment.
Okay.
And as far as.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as far as commerce goes, early next month, in the next work session, I'll be bringing forward the force, not the force, I'm sorry, oh my God. They're on our shortlist of approved engineers. Prime engineering, I've been in discussion with them about doing the engineering design work as well as construction management and helping with our bidding for the Commerce Park. So I'll be onboarding them with you all's approval, and then we'll do a community meeting to talk about what we wanted in that space.
But going back to the equipment, is it equipment for, let's say, someone who may have autism?
Yes, that was approved on November 18th.
I know you said ADA accessible?
Yep.
And sometimes they just need a sensory item accessible to them outside.
Yeah, so it's a variety of equipment that was approved on the 18th, auto sensory and accessible. So as far as like swings go, for example, that would be the accessible portion. But we do have auto sensory playground equipment that's included in that order.
Thank you. Any further special questions or action?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, I have to read the agenda, item number 16.
Second.
Then properly seconded, any discussion? I did think of one thing you mentioned, unless I wrote the wrong numbers, you said it was 1.2 million and then another.
1.395.
1.395.
I was about to say, that didn't add up to 1.510, okay.
And 115,000.
1,000,003.
1,000,003.
195,000 for parks?
Yes, ma'am, 1,000,003.
Park improvements.
And then vehicles was 115,000.
115,000. Okay.
I do have another question.
Councilmember Shropshire.
So, two questions. What are the, what are you, what are the vehicles for? And secondly, what's the timeline on having those new equipment put into Center Park as well as Sumner Park?
Alright, so as far as the vehicles go, those were CIP-approved items. We put that on the agenda back in July. Those vehicles are already here. One was an F-250 for a truck. When we have to move around stuff, we've been using our Sprinter vans for everything. As far as the Sprinter, well, that's the truck, we ordered another Sprinter van. A lot of times we have council needs, other departments actually use our vehicles, so now we have a fourth Sprinter van. Those have already been purchased and they're actually on site now. As far as Center Park goes specifically, it was approved on December 18th for a new playground. And on early January, we'll be putting out the solicitation for the actual construction work to elect an actual vendor to do the construction. So what we already purchased is the actual playground, we purchased all the park amenities. Now it's time to do the tear out and get a construction company to come in to do the new design. So there's going out for solicitation in January.
So let me ask you this, because you talked about the 10-year comp plan.
Yes.
And you said that that would be, that would allow for the residents to give input on what they want to see in the parks.
Yes.
So do you think that you should have had that meeting before now? Because they might want to see something different. And you're putting the stuff in the park, which means that you will either add or take out.
Correct. So I'm glad you asked that. So the thought process was, we had a lot of structural things that were wrong, that really wasn't up for an opinion per se. It's like, for example, the bathrooms at Brookdale, those bathrooms are probably 25, 30 years old. The stairwell at Sumner Park, it was becoming a hazard. The playground equipment, a lot of our playground equipment has not been replaced 20 to 25 years from now. So a lot of the improvements have come for things that were broken and not functioning properly or not accessible to all. So we haven't made any structural changes per se. Most of the purchases so far have been to make things accessible and to demolish stuff that's old or certain things that were particular hazards. So there's still enough room in the 10-year master plan for improvement because we do have a lot of undeveloped green spaces that we have not done something with.
So then you're gonna, so then the thought process is to make the parks bigger than what they are?
Not, the amount of land we have is what we have. Now, we do have. Now, we do have unused green spaces that can be better used in the parks. So that's where the input will come into place. Like, for example, with Sumna Park, the upper side by the bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
That is just, uh, used to be a gym, long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
So I've not changed anything as far as a structural design to the open green spaces. What I've been doing since we got this money in July are making changes on things that are hazards. And then once we get past those things, we can start getting the input to design things in unused green spaces. So, we do have some land that has not been touched, but I'm not building on those things. I'm more so fixing and adding to, to what we have, or tearing out what's old and putting new playground equipment in.
So you wanna add on the land what used to be, um, Sumna Park Recreation Center?
Potentially. I mean, that's what's gonna come out when we start doing the community meetings to figure out what people would like to see in those spaces.
And we, and, and we probably need to, um, look at adding other recreation centers to the, um, to replace what was there. Cause there was a-
Yeah, it was two.
It was a recreation center at Sumna Park, and it was a-
Charles, I agree.
-recreation center at, uh, John A. Milner Park.
Yep.
And they, they tore them down. So, the city needs to look into replacing those to give kids more places to go opposed to just going to Jefferson Park Recreation Center.
I definitely agree. So hopefully that's the discussions that'll come out when we start the ward meetings, and we can kinda see what the residents are thinking. But that was the thought process, where we put money, I'm sorry, that was the thought process where we put money currently.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number seventeen. Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion for, um, discussion and possible action on the MOU regarding the obligation of SLFRF funds, no-cost minor home repair, seniors and veterans program, and human resources program for the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Empowerment Department not to exceed five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jessie.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we have, uh, two representatives from the Office of Equity. Frank Whitfield is going to talk about the no-cost minor home repair. And we have Shannon Armstrong, who will be available if you have questions about the funds that we're allocating for human services. You all know that they have a very active, um, team for responding to people who are unhoused as well as people who have other emergencies that may have to move, uh, from their current, um, place of residence. And they end up having to buy things for those individuals. So, we were able to allocate some dollars for that.
All right, um, in regards to this MOU, um, for the no-cost home minor repair, that was already, uh, allocated for three hundred and fifty thousand. The remaining, uh, funds were allocated to human services for two, I think, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Uh, I have Mr. Whitfield here to speak about the home repair, if you have questions in regards to that. Sorry.
How much for the home repair? How much additional for the home?
Uh, um, the home repair was, it's, it's, it's at a flat three fifty. It's the same as it was. It, it didn't change.
Okay, so we don't have questions on that with the other part? I mean, hold, that's from Martin Rogers. Okay, the next one.
Uh, the next one was, um, human services. We allocated two hundred and sixty-six thousand, um, two sixteen, I'm sorry, two sixteen, eight, eighty, eighty-nine for, to help with, um, homelessness.
Councilmember Butler.
I do. Could you explain to us? Uh, I guess it's a tricky situation, cause we do wanna help the homeless. And, but I was wondering, I was, my understanding that we were increasing this to help more seniors. Could you help us understand the choice made in that? And what the need is so that we can really get comfortable with that?
Sure, um, with, uh, human services, like, um, interim city manager Ms. Jessie indicated, uh, they've been busy trying to help, uh, the, I have Shannon here that can speak in regards to the operations of that.
Madam Mayor, council. Okay, so right now we are using the funds to assist people with rental assistance, but not only that, it's for emergency shelter. And also we are now trying to target the seniors and the veterans that has been displaced as well.
Any further questions?
No.
Councilmember Martin Rogers.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the MOU regarding the obligation of the SLFRF funds, no-cost minor home repair, seniors and veterans program, and human services program for the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Empowerment Department not to exceed five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Stop, need a motion to open the floor for discussion on the local food ecosystem, um, position. This is for a position scope update. Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for discussion and possible action on the local food ecosystem.
Moved, is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So everybody has to say aye, it's only five of y'all. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jessie.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you all asked me to bring back or to send you, uh, proposed, uh, scope of work for the urban agriculture consulting services. I sent that out, uh, last week on Thursday, and, uh, I did not receive any, uh, comments back from anyone, but I wanted to know if there were questions tonight.
Um, and Ms. Jessie, if you can kinda just walk us through a high-level overview of the scope, and then your plan as to when you will release the solicitation? Cause I think we talked about the consulting.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, this scope of work will be a part of a request for proposals for an urban agricultural consulting services vendor. And, uh, basically what I did is to go through the, um, cities, City of East Point Agriculture Plan that has already been completed, uh, by the Local Food Ecosystem Commission along with some other partners, uh, the USDA, the, um, Atlanta Regional Commission, Food Well Alliance, and some other groups. Uh, I took that and, um, grouped this into the objectives that we will want, um, the consultant to, um, achieve for us or at least start some additional work. So, the priorities would be to improve the equitable local food access, support local urban growers, uh, establish the role of local government. There is a lot of discussion about how active, um, local government should be in this endeavor. And, uh, cultivate environmentally resilient practices to really promote sustainable and eco-friendly agricultural methods. And to look at branding East Point as a local food destination. And that would entail developing initiatives that showcase East Point as a hub for innovative and accessible local food systems. Uh, the second objective would be to identify grant resources or grant sources and to continue the stakeholder outreach plan and to, to develop an annual operating budget. Um, involved in this would be heavy collaborative engagement. The Local Food Ecosystem, um, Commission have really, um, involved, um, far and wide. They went far and ro- wide to identify, um, agencies, individuals, nonprofit groups that could support the urban agricultural, uh, program development in East Point. I think we should really want to focus on, uh, focus on sustainability and not just have this as a one-time effort, but fully integrate this into the City of East Point's many plans that we have, which will include the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, the, uh, plan that, um, Shalora Pinkett talked about, the master plan for parks and recreation, because, uh, that department is also mentioned as a partner in this endeavor. And we would want to continue the cross-collaboration within our, um, local government to ensure that all of the applicable departments play an active role in this project or initiative. We would, uh, issue the request for proposals in, um, January if you all are okay with the project, the scope.
Any questions, comments, concern? So, I guess, um, from a budget perspective, I think we looked at this, it was just allocated for consulting, not employment with benefits. So we've already made that decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I don't think there's any further action needed from us. The, you said it'll be released in January?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We will move to item number, did you need anything else from us, Ms. Jessie?
No, ma'am, but thank you all for your support.
Alrighty, um, next, if we can open the floor for discussion and possible action, item number nineteen. Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action on Fulton County's Continuum of Care twenty-two-four point in time count.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, um, in speaking with Fulton County, um, representatives regarding who responsible for the continuum of care point in time count, they would like for this to be, they would like to use our annex annually. Um, and that would require at least a resolution of council. And so, I think in an abundance of caution so they can start planning for, um, January twenty-two-five, I'd ask that council approve, um, partnering with the Fulton County Continuum of Care for the twenty-two-four point in time count, um, to allow the county to utilize the city annex um, for that count. And then we could bring back sometime in March a resolution for council to consider, um, to, for this to be an annual commitment between, and partnership with the city and the county. And the point in time count is, again, the, um, federally required count of people experiencing homelessness within the county. And for the last two or three years, the county has utilized the city annex as the location for their count in South Fulton County, um, for like training as well as for, um, the volunteers and everybody to meet up on the actual night of the count. And it's generally, they might start around in the afternoon, seven or eight, and go through three, four o'clock in the morning. Discussion questions or action?
All right.
Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Yep, thank you. A motion to approve the Fulton County's Continuum of Care twenty-two-four point in time count? Use of the city annex?
In action, it's probably, it should be twenty-two-five.
Twenty-two-five. I'll repeat the motion. All right, a motion to approve Fulton County's Continuum of Care twenty-two-four, utilizing the city's annex.
Here's the confusion. The event happens in twenty-two-five, but I think it's the count for the twenty-two-four. So, let's just say the, of motion to approve Fulton County's use of the city annex for the continuum of care point in time count in January twenty-two-five.
So moved, so moved.
It's been moved and, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. All those opposed?
Motion carries. Um, the last item, can we get a motion for this, open the floor for discussion and possible action?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sharpshire.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, open the floor and possible action for one hundred black men of South Metro Rights of Pa- Passage Academy. Passage Academy, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So at our work session last week, we had representatives from the Hundred Black Men of South Metro present and share information with us about the Rights of Passage Leadership Academy that serves, um, City of East Point youth, but also youth in the metro area. Um, and since then, uh, our city attorney has spoken with them, and so I'm gonna turn it over to her, um, to go over the draft MOU that has been shared with us.
Yes, ma'am, so you got passed out, thank you, Madam Clerk, um, a copy of the MOU. Um, so, in the whereas clause, we made sure to include, um, the purpose of the use of our city facilities, that it does benefit East Point residents, the youth residents, that is. Um, the first section will describe just the responsibilities and obligations of the parties. We will be sure to have a waiver of liability, um, signed by them prior to them occupying, um, for indemnification purposes. If there's anything with regard to negligence of our upkeep of the building, that obviously would not be their responsibility. And then the term of the agreement, um, it's one year with successive renewals um, until either party terminates. Uh, and you'll see the rest of that is pretty self-explanatory.
Councilmember Ak-
Yes, thank you. Uh, Madam Attorney, I know you just said something about the upkeep of the building would be our responsibility. Is there something that is covered in the memorandum of understanding that would be their responsibility above normal wear and tear? Because we wanna make sure that we're protecting our asset as well.
You're absolutely right. The waiver, the waiver that we, um, require any renter when they use our facilities, uh, would be executed, and it has that language.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion, um, questions or act? I'm Martin Rogers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a hundred black men of South Metro Incorporated Rights of Passage Academy.
Memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, any comments from council? Member Butler, are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, citizens of East Point. This is our last meeting of the year. I would like to first thank my colleagues for a productive and tough year. I thank Sharon Sharpshire for ending the year by us giving gratitude to some of those that help us. This has been a tough year for a lot of us. I send prayer to those like myself who may have lost a loved one this year. And I'm hopeful but reticent about what was going to come in twenty twenty-five. I leave this wish that, a gift under my Christmas tree that we all could get along better as a community and as a group, as this council, so that we can best represent the people of East Point. I am grateful for all the people that work and serve here at East Point. It was a pleasure to share time with you at your Christmas festivities. Thank you Chief for what you do for the police department and visiting with those retired police officers who paved the way. That was very interesting. So as my last message of the year, I want to say I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve each and every one of you. And I wish you all a very happy new year.
Councilmember Eck.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say thank you to um all of the various departments across the city that have assisted in my onboarding. As you all know, I'm just newly sworn in just last week. And I thank all of the, my colleagues for their warm welcome. And I look forward to doing the very important work of our citizens as we move the city forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Sharpshire.
Thank you, um first I want to say, calling all Divine Nine, all residents and all business owners and stakeholders. We are doing a holiday food drive um that's going on now up until Friday. You can drop off your non-perishable food items at any fire station in the City of East Point between eight AM and eight PM and City Hall from eight to five. And the reality is, there's really a struggle when it comes to the holidays, especially around Christmas, when people are trying to feed their family. So we want to be the ones to help those that are in need. And we're asking you to help us help those that are in need during this Christmas season. Because Christmas is one of the most hardest holiday season uh that we go through for people who don't, who are less fortunate than others who don't have. So if we can help provide a meal for a family on Christmas Day, that would be great. And if you can help us by donating non-perishable food where they can make a meal on Christmas Day, that would be great. We're also having a hen and ham holiday giveaway on this Saturday, December the twenty-first at Jefferson Park Recreation Center, um starting at ten. You must be an East Point resident and you must have a valid ID. Um, and so that is what we're going to do on Saturday um to help also provide for the community. But I do want to say this, um we are entering the holiday season. And this is the last council meeting for the year. So um with this year, it has brought on a lot. And as Councilmember Butler said, uh people have lost people in their family. Some, I've lost this year, oh so many. My mom lost her brother. My aunt who passed, her husband passed. I lost two cousins. It's just been. This has been a, a year. So I say this, we need to be thankful for what we have because there's a lot of people who don't have. And we need to look at this year and how we're going to do next year different. I don't do New Year resolutions because I don't keep them. But I just want to say, just look at the, the, look at. I see things different now. And just look at going into New Year, more focused on your goals, building and making it better and what you're going to do to help um bridge the gap or make things better to improve people's lives, because that's what we do. We're here to improve the city and improve people's lives. So I say that and I wish everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would first like to start with um just expressing my gratitude for all of the residents in Ward D that continued throughout this year to show up for our community gatherings. Um, so I want to thank the Ward D residents um for spending time with me on Saturday, December seventh, as we begin to close out twenty twenty-four headed into twenty twenty-five. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the mayor, um councilmember Sharpshire, Butler and Cummings for coming out. Um, I'd also like to thank the Williamsburg community for their token of appreciation. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the departments in East Point. It is a great, it's many departments in our City of East Point. But I'd like to take this opportunity to thank every department, our interim city manager for her guidance and leadership during this time on council. Um, but especially our develop, our um departments. Uh, also, that's why I did not want to start mentioning people. But on December seventh, our interim city manager came out, the Economic Development Department came out, the Police Department came out, and I'm miss- I'm missing someone. The Water and Sewer Department also came out to give Ward D just some brief updates about what is happening in Ward D and throughout the city. So everyone, please have a joyous holiday season and thank you so much for your support.
So um, happy holidays to everyone. Um, I would say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa. Um, and whatever holidays are celebrated, others may celebrate during this time of the year. Um, as we plan to and look forward to um the winding down and wrap-up of twenty twenty-five, I invite you to um join us in elevating in twenty twenty-five. Um, as we wind down this year, we've had a number of accomplishments. Um, we've had a number of of residents who've transitioned. Um, the services for Braddock Hill, um the owner of East Point Printing will be this Wednesday. Um, and there have been many others um that have transitioned this year. But as we close out the year and and embrace the spirit of gratitude, to be grateful for um our family, for our friends, for um the great city that we live in, for the staff that provides services to us every day to ensure that the needs of our residents are met. Um, thank you to each and every one of our staff, to our police department, our fire department, who again run to trouble when we, I, I know run away from it. Um, we greatly appreciate all that you do to ensure our safety. Um, and again, as we wind down this year and start to prepare for a new year um and think about the best being yet to come, let's plan to elevate in twenty twenty-five. Let's plan to um continue to move this city forward and continue to do the things that are going to be, that's sometimes against the grain, but definitely in the best interest of our residents. Let's be people-focused, let's continue to put people over party profit and politics and personalities and all of those other things. If we lead with people, we always win. And our people, our residents, the over thirty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-eight residents in this city are counting on us to be able to do that and put them first, to lead with them in every decision that we make. Um, and when there's a balancing act that we don't put their quality of life and the um, the stressors that they may experience on the backside of decisions that we make as, as a body. And so again, happy holidays, we actually have two Mondays off as we wind up this year. And so um enjoy the time with family and friends. Um, there will be the Santa ride-along on December the twenty-first, I believe it is, by our fire department. That's always an exciting event as we ride through the city and provide toys and joy. And and um there's always a firefighter who actually dresses up as Santa and we have picture opportunities and all of that for the community. But as we're in this season, let's not forget about um, you know, the, there are others who may be in need and how we may be able to help support, not only during the holidays, but year-round. Um, I'm grateful for the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Empowerment and the work that is continuing to be done. Um, I was here at City Hall earlier today and I saw staff meeting with a resident, meeting with a, with a um, an individual who I'm sure was in need of some level of service. We have, are becoming known for a place where we connect people to the resources to support the service, the training. I mean, it's not just about people experiencing homelessness, that is a huge um area. But there's also support that is provided through the empowerment plan that Ms. Johnson helps um individuals who find themselves in East Point at, in need of services to prepare so that they can be empowered to, um and and from a very value-based perspective and and not um a negative. It's important that we engage with everyone with dignity and respect regardless of who they are, um what they look like, where they live, who they love, any of those things. This is a place uh where we value diversity because we know our diversity is our strength. And let's continue to move forward in that vein. There are a number of exciting projects that are happening and will continue to happen in this city um in twenty twenty-five and beyond. But again, let's elevate in twenty twenty-five. Do we have any executive session items this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I meant from, I should have said from legal, yes, go ahead.
I have two legal, one personnel.
Two legal, one personnel, Ms. Jesse?
No ma'am.
From um council, I know we should at least have a real estate and a personnel for update.
So three personnel, two legal and one real estate?
Um, I'm sorry. So Ms. Attorney Wiggins had two legal.
Two legal.
Two personnel?
One personnel.
Two legal, one personnel. Ms. Jesse didn't have any, any, I mentioned, one real estate and one personnel.
So is it two personnels? Because you saying one personnel.
Cor- so you mentioned one, I have two.
So it's, so it's two personnel. Who, three personnel. Three personnel.
And.
Two.
Four legal. Four legal.
Four legal.
One real estate.
One real estate.
So two real estate, four legal and three personnel.
So moved. We go into executive session.
Move that we recess into executive session for two real estate, four legal and three personnel, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess. Can I get a motion to reconvene?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries in the matter, in the claim of nice guy maintenance and electric, need a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, can we get a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes?
Mm, so moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn. It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, good night, East Pointers, happy holidays and happy new year.